I've got 6:30 on my phone, so we're gonna go and get started. It's June 10th, 2019. This is a public meeting of the school board of the West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the Education Service Center, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources who have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted? Great, thanks. Please stand for the pledge.
I thought that was on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We've got six board members here now, and Nancy texted me and said she's gonna be five minutes late, so we will soon have all seven of us here. We recognize a quorum tonight, and we've also got some good-looking students in the crowd with medals around their necks and things, so let's have some fun. We're gonna start with Ally in FBLA. Oh, I suppose we should do that. Hang on a second, we need an agenda first. Hopefully, board members have had a chance to review the agenda, and with that, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? Great. Ally, we'll start with you, thanks. Any of the students we recognize tonight, we'll just have you come right like this and face the crowd.
So, thank you for having us. I'm Ally Holzer, I teach business at the high school, and I am here to recognize the 24 responsible FBLA students who made state, although apparently, some of them forgot to put it in their calendars, because only three have showed up. Future Business Leaders of America, representing well. So, we had kind of a record year this year. We have 37 students in our chapter, the majority of them compete at regionals, and this year, we had 24 make state, which is the most we have ever had, by at least double. We took third at regionals overall of 26 chapters, and again, for a relatively small chapter, that was a major accomplishment. At state, from state, we are sending seven on to nationals, which we fly out June 28th to San Antonio, Texas for a few days, and then we'll be back. So, those who made it here tonight, Lexi Williams is a freshman, and she competed on a team with a couple other freshmen in business ethics. And for freshmen to take on that category is hard, and they did extremely well making it a state, and very proud of them, so I can't wait to take home to nationals next year in that category. Lexi Florentino took seventh at state in securities and investments, and then Rachel Gergitz took fifth in organizational leadership, and she is one of the seven going on to nationals. Since others are not here, I'm not gonna go through all 24 with you, they are in your executive summary, but hopefully, we will continue the trend of doing well, so.
Awesome. Congratulations. Good luck at nationals. We'll have Molly come up next, and we're gonna recognize the East Girls Track Team.
Good evening. It's an exciting night for East Athletics. We have a couple of groups here this evening, and I'm gonna start with my head girls track coach, Cody Olson.
All right, Sidney, you can come up. See, it's only 6:34, and I was supposed to go at 6:36, so I got a few more minutes, I guess, huh? Sidney made it to state, her goal was to get back to state this year. She made it as a junior last year, and her biggest goal is to get back. As a freshman and sophomore, she was a spectator, came up with her dad and watched Annie compete. The last two years has just been amazing to watch you compete. This year at state, she finished seventh in high jump out of 26 competitors, won off the podium. Huge PR, she jumped 5'4", and that jumped her into seventh place. And then triple jump didn't go her way, didn't go the way you wanted it to, but you made it in two events, and that's huge, so congratulations.
Congratulations.
And now, on the boys' side, I'll call up our boys head track coach, Tom Hogaster.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing us to have our guys be recognized today. In front of you, we have five of six athletes from the East boys' side that made it to state. The first one that is not here is Brady Brem, he was an alternate in the 4x4. Next up is Ryan Gergitz, he was also an alternate in the 4x4, and is a freshman. Jack Adness is next, he was in the 4x4, and was a vital part in that relay all year. Unfortunately, Jack is a senior, but it was a very valuable experience having him on our team for the last two years. Next is Jack Weidmeyer. Jack Weidmeyer was actually in two events, he was in the 4x4, and also in the 400. Jack is also a senior, and he's gonna be greatly missed. Right in the middle is Nolan Renick, who is a sophomore. Nolan qualified in the 4x4, and also in the 400. And then, at the end, is Joe Salamone. Joe qualified in the 4x4, 300 intermediate hurdles, and the 110 high hurdles. The 4x4 did take 13th place, they did set a PR in that race. Nolan placed 15th in the 400, and also, Jack placed 17th in the 400. Jack and Nolan are the first 400-qualifiers since 1990. Joe Salamone on the end, who you probably have heard of. Joe in the 4x4, obviously, was 13th. In the 300 intermediate hurdles, he did set a school record at state, and also placed fifth, and in the 110 high hurdles, he is the state champion.
Oh, boy.
And these are our guys, and again, the seniors I'm gonna really miss, and the young guys, they'll be back.
I love those state-bound shirts you guys made, that's very cool.
And then finally, for East Athletics tonight, I'll call up my boys tennis coach, Seth Reinig.
Thank you for having us. So, we've got Alex Shates, he came back from injury last year to lead the team, he's a team captain, and this is his junior season, and he led the team very much surprising, I think, a lot of us as coaches, we went 12-6, and that would not have been possible without Alex. He surpassed the team, going 20-5 with a pretty tough schedule, in probably the toughest conference in the state, he took either third or fourth, since the conference tournament was rained out, so we'll call it third. In a very tough sectional, he took third. As a freshman, he went to state, but had to get a special qualifier this year, he earned his way in totally on his own play, so that was really cool. And he looks to be on his way to join a very select group of East tennis players to go to state every year they're eligible, so we're looking forward to one more year, and he's really done us proud. Thank you.
All right. I have the honor to represent West Bend West. So, first want to congratulate all of the state qualifiers for both the girls and the boys, and coaches, first-year head coach, Mike Herther for the boys, and head coach Jerry Halipka and their staff. So, we'll start with the girls, so Coach Halipka, come on up.
West Bend West Girls Track has a history over the last 12 years of sending multiple relay teams to the state meet, and we did it once again this year. Both our 4x4, which I'll just have my 4x4 girls go ahead and stand forward, it's sometimes easier to do it this way. Ashlyn Ebersetzig, Olivia Burns, Maddie Rettler, and Abby Campfield placed ninth, making it to the second day. They ran their season best on prelims, which is sometimes where the best times come, and to place ninth is an outstanding job by them, and once again, continuing that tradition of our 4x4. Nice job, ladies. Our 4x2 also made it to state. This team was ranked second going into the state tournament, and ended with a fourth-place finish. You ladies want to go ahead and stand forward along with the alternates? So, we had the alternates here too, and then Riley Martini, by the way, sorry, she didn't step forward before, she was an alternate in our 4x4 team. Natalie Kozmak was our alternate. Alexis Williams was also an alternate running it, was Abby Campfield, Maddie Paulson, Olivia Burns, and Ashlyn Ebersetzig. They fell just short of our school record, but ran a 142, which puts them, I believe, like top 50 all-time in the state of Wisconsin with their time, and ended up with a fourth-place finish. We thought we had a third-place finish, but then there was a little disqualification, stuff that needed to be straightened out, and we ended up with a fourth-place finish, besting their place from the year previous where they took fifth place, so nice job, ladies. We had two individuals that qualified in events, we'll start off with Ashlyn. Ashlyn pulled kind of a very difficult double, the 4x2 is first, and then right after, it's the 400, she's done it the last two years, and she's helped both her team and as an individual, she ended up placing ninth again this season, so it's back-to-back ninth-place finishes for her. As a sophomore, to make it to state in that many events is pretty amazing, and can't wait to coach for the next two years in those events. And then finally, Maddie Rettler, as Coach Wani would say, I'm a big, strong man with this, he, this was his first podium jumper Coach Wani has had, Coach Wani has worked with me for 10 years, it was pretty amazing, I didn't even get to see her jump, because there was so much going on at the state meet, but the last thing I saw was she popped a really big jump, she went from sixth place all the way up to fourth place with about a five-inch PR at that time to place, and she was in some pretty tough competition, as Sidney probably knew, the state record was broke that day, and another girl was very close to it with a 41-foot jump, so it's pretty amazing, yeah. Girls Track is pretty amazing right now in the state of Wisconsin, so congratulations, ladies, and nice job.
That's like jumping across this room. I mean, that's awesome.
One other added note here for the girls, they are the North Shore Conference Champions, so they took first place in conference. We have Coach Mike Herther, and they took second place in conference for outdoor and first place for indoor this year. Come on up with your guys.
Thank you again for having us. I just want to speak on all the athletic programs here and all the other extracurriculars. We are truly thankful for what the community does, you guys as board members for providing us all these opportunities to go and excel. It's what makes high school fun and special for these kids, so we just appreciate the continued support that everyone in the town gives us, all of you guys go do for us and just help us on out. And personally, I just want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to spend time with these young men. They're gonna grow into very respectable members of our community, and bring us a lot of good things back to West Bend, so it's just an honor spending the season with them. Like Ms. Felber said, we had a very successful season, but statewide, here's what we have, 4x2 team, we had, you guys want to step forward? 4x2 team, we had two seniors on it, Eli Tranom and Josh Johnson. Eli was alternate at state. Up there at state, we had Don Brozinski running it, Nate Wake running it, Josh Johnson and Jamari Sloans. Three of these boys are only sophomores, so it's good to go and get some use on up there, a lot of good things to come for them, and we had a good senior group to lead them on their way, so they ended up placing 23rd, but when you go and you take a very young team up there, it's all about the experience, and they got more to shoot for in the future. They were only a second off our school record, too, so to take 23rd, but to be a second off our school record, it's still a huge accomplishment, so thank you, boys. Then we had James Wonkey. James Wonkey qualified in two events, he qualified in the high jump and in 300 hurdles. James is a junior. High jump's sort of been his thing, indoor state, he took third place in it. 300 hurdles, he kind of just ran it in one event, just sort of a coin flip to get him in, and he's at state at it, so impressive guy, got a little technique to work on, and I know that's a race that he wants to do well in, he finished 12th, just missed out on day two by three places. Thank you, James. And Mason Walsh-Lager. Mason qualified in two events as well. Mason qualified in the long, or triple jump, my bad, triple jump in the 110 hurdles, Mason ran a 15.09, what was his second personal best by 300ths of a second, but he ended up just missing out on day two for finals by five places, and finished 14th in his 110 hurdles. Thanks, Mace. And finally, Eli Tranal. Eli was a four-time state qualifier. What's impressive to do in track and field, when you're going back and forth, to event to event, and you're getting the best competition. He qualified in the 100 to 200 to pole vault, and was a part of the 4x2 team, that helped get these young guys the opportunity. So, Eli was a captain all season, a very humble leader, just a really respectable guy who's gonna be going to Oshkosh, and Eli is actually a part of six of our school records, he ended up going and breaking five of them himself this year. They include the 100, 200, 55 indoor, 200 indoor, and the pole vault. So, pole vault was the one that he's worked since little on, and at state, he finished in second place with a vault of 15 feet 3 inches, what ended up smoking our previous school record, and technically tied champion is just how the events work up there, so congratulations, boys, and again, thank you, West Bend, for your continued support.
Congratulations to all of our athletes, our tennis players, our track team, our FBLA team, and to the students and coaches and sponsors, thank you for representing West Bend well, not just in competition, but with a lot of pride and class, and as a community, we appreciate when you go off and compete hard and represent West Bend the way that you do, so thank you. How many of you are seniors? Did you all graduate yesterday? Good. Congratulations on that, and remember that you've always got a place here in West Bend, so if you're around next year and want to help out with track teams and tennis teams and FBLA teams, whatever, make sure you come back and visit, so congratulations. Is there anybody wishing to address the board for public participation tonight? If not, the board, we do have some business to take care of tonight, you're all welcome to stay if you'd like, this is typically when people like to leave, and we understand that as well, so thank you for coming.
I guess I figured, what are we gonna have, two left? Should we vote? Should we bet? I'll say two left, outside of staff. Kurt, what do you say? How many left? I say there'll be two audience members left. Right. Day after graduation.
Thanks for coming.
I saw so many of these little smiling faces yesterday.
All right, why don't we move on? On our consent agenda tonight, we've got minutes of our May 20th regular board meeting, dispersments posted to June 10th, 2019, out-of-country field trip request, ratification of contracts, and a resignation. Hopefully, we've all had time to review those, and if so, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second by Chris and Nancy, any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? None? That passes. And then, our first action item tonight is the Spanish Five textbook adoption, and I think Laura's gonna do that one.
So, at our last meeting, we had presented on the Spanish Five textbook. Shelley Krieger was also here to also address some of the questions of the board. Are there any questions moving forward with this adoption?
I will move to approve the adoption of, how do you say this?
Riadalus.
Riadalus IV as the primary resource for the high school Spanish Five course.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next one is our third reading of Revised Board Policy 342.7, which is services for English learners.
So, this is our third reading, are there any questions at this time on this policy?
I move to approve Revised Board Policy 342.7, services for English learner.
Second.
Let Kurt have that one, he never gets one.
Motion by Chris and a second by Kurt. Any questions on this one? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? And that policy carries. Thank you. First discussion tonight, I think Don is gonna take us through, is discussion on the West High School library.
Yes, when we did our tours, I showed you the high school libraries, both east and west. I believe they're both original carpet in east and west library, and both are in need of being replaced, but west library especially, not only is it faded and shot, but it's also pulling up from the floor, and so it really is a hazard, because the, there's so many waves and bubbles, and it's just so easy for someone to potentially trip, and it just needs to be replaced. And so, what we would like to do is to take west library out of circulation for the 2019-20 school year. And with us today is Kim from the library, and Tim, as well as Dave Ross, and so if you have any questions, please ask, and we'll try to answer those, but we would use east library as our main library for the 1920 school year. That would give us an opportunity to rip out the old carpet, to move the books, to condense the books, to go to a smaller version, whether we have one library or two, we know that we need to weed some books. We would also take out some of the temporary walls that are put in place over the years, and so hopefully, we would come back to the board sometime in December with a plan for the future, okay? And that would maybe be to look at, if we had one library down the road, what would we like it to look like? And, and not a decision for tonight, because you might say, you know what, we think we need to have two libraries, and if that's the case, then the following year, we would take east out of commission and do a renovation of east library as well. But for this year, we would move everything that we needed to move from west to east, we would have one library and not two, we would still keep the study hall available at west library, as well as the east library. Eventually, we would like to look to see what it would take for us to renovate that study hall, and now take that whole perimeter and turn it into one big spacious library area. Before we do that, we need to find out what's the cost involved with that study hall, because it's a raised floor, and so we don't want to spend double the cost of the renovation just by removing that raised floor. Potentially, we would leave the raised floor and have some other type of neat feature to the library, but that's something to be determined down the road. For this year, what we're proposing is to just have one library, it would be in east, both Darcy and Ralph, as well as John Graff, the new east principal, are on board, they're excited about the opportunity, they're working to get some rooms cleaned out. There's a computer room in east that we would keep, we don't feel that we need the computer room anymore for the computers, but we would keep that room available for extra storage of west things, of a classroom potential, that if you needed to come in and utilize it, you could utilize it, and go from there. We did allocate $100,000, I believe is the right amount, Dave, $105,000 in the budget, based on us knowing that we were going to need to do some things, that was for carpet in both libraries. We really think it's more appropriate for us to decide what we want to do, do one, and what we don't want to do is to spend money and then decide that we want to go from two to one, and have to take up or undo something that we did this year. We want to make sure that we have the shell in place, and then from that, we can give you some recommendations, you can give us the okay to say, yep, let's do this or not do this, and then we can proceed, so we're not undoing next year what we did this year. So, that's in a nutshell. Dave, Tim, Kim, anything else that we talked earlier, we did go and visited three libraries, we went to Kettle Marine, we went to Waukesha West, and we went to Miss Keagle, and saw libraries that in all three cases, there had been major renovations, okay? Some of them are newer buildings, some of them are older buildings, about the same age of our building, but all of them had renovations, and so, and what we would like to do when it's all said and done, is have the library become the main point of destination in our school, and so whether it's one library or two, we believe that we have the ability to turn our library into a point of destination, and that's what we would like it to happen. Obviously, we have financial limitations, and we need to figure out how we can make that happen. Questions that you have of me and/or the experts?
Couple of comments, so first of all, I'm very much in favor of not throwing money at something only to re-rip it up in the future, so I like that idea. I would ask, and I'm sorry I missed the name, but could I ask the librarian to come to the podium, so we could ask her some questions? Not to put you on the spot, these would be easy answers for you. So, I know that you know the students and the library, so otherwise, I wouldn't ask you these questions. So, I think my first question is, obviously, you know the most about it, more so than anyone, as far as student needs and what the students are using, so how do you see this as a positive impact for students moving to one library versus two?
Well, like he said, we're not sure if we're going one or two yet. Libraries have changed a lot. Right now, we have a lot of, in my opinion, we have a lot of duplication of services with the internet and everything else like that. When they built the two schools, they had to have the two libraries, they had 10 social studies teachers on one side, 10 on the other, they're all using the same materials, they don't do that anymore, it's on the internet, so we don't need all of that stuff. We could put our money to much better use, and provide so many more things, there's so many more things out there that I would love to do with those kids, and I think they would really like it.
Can you name a couple of those things?
Can I name a couple of those things?
Yeah, not to put you on the spot, but such as?
Oh, how, Makerspace, the 3D printing, the esports, the opportunity to come in and do some green screen. The kids go past downstairs on the, whatever hallway that is, I get, well, my letters mixed up up there yet, but the main hallway, they go past and they see all these things happening, but the only kids that can use that stuff are the kids in those classes. This would allow them to do all their other activities that they want to do, what, excuse me, with going towards personalized learning, and have the opportunity to create their projects, and have access to the materials to do it, and the equipment to do it would be so awesome, so.
Just one, well, one of the comments, when we went to visit the libraries, all of them have one school that's larger than our, any, either east or west, they're not as big as both of them put together, but their library selection was significantly less than ours, and the reason is because they have done a good job of weeding out reference materials. You still have the reading materials, that's still a major part of the library, but the internet has provided so many more opportunities for the reference selections to be from 100 down to 10, or from 500 down to 50, or whatever the case might be, and so when we talk about downsizing some of the materials, one of the biggest areas is in the reference, and I don't want to, because I'm not a librarian.
Reference and the nonfiction.
Yeah.
It's more popular fiction, getting the kids to read, working on their reading skills, having things available for that. Yeah, absolutely. Our collections have changed a lot over the years. When I first started 20-some years ago, we were almost three-quarters nonfiction, and a quarter fiction, and the times have turned, and we're flipping the other way. And the times have turned and we're flipping the other way. So.
In, in all three of the libraries that we visited, what we saw was a lot of areas where, not necessarily a closed off room, but maybe just a petition that comes out and there was a, a place for five or seven or three kids to work off to the side. And it's not a quiet sleeping zone library the way it was when I was a kid. It's truly is a interactive area. And so when we were at Kettle Marine, for example, there was maybe ten, twelve different spots where kids could go and they, they really focused on, it was a major study environment as well as just a library. And, and it, it was fun to, fun to visit all three of them. I was very impressed, I think all of us were.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So in the proposed twenty nineteen, twenty twenty implications, would the West Library be of any use or would it be completely off limits basically and being renovated during this timeframe?
Dave, Andrew, Tim, you can help me out, but, but I believe the answer is that we're going to keep the study hall for West for use. But the East part will be ripping out the carpet, will be ripping out some walls. We'll try to do that and, and so it doesn't have a distraction. But we won't be putting things back in place until we figure out what it is and where we want to do it. So long answer to a short question is, I believe that it will be out of commission for the entire nineteen twenty school year.
That's generally correct. I mean, the, the, we're going to try to have the, really the, the bulk of the work done by the first of the year, so that if there's a large group need for, for a space, we could potentially use that space, but we really would like to try to keep it out of circulation if we could.
You know, one other quick comment is that, obviously, this is my first year, but when I visit with, with Kim and Tim and Dave, I, I think this discussion has been going on for ten plus years. I, I, Tim, you can help out and?
I've been in the district fifteen years and this is, I think, the second or third time we've looked at our high school library configuration, the space, the carpeting always comes up. So Kim and I envision very much like you see our district technology plan. As we start this process for the West Library, we are going to develop that library media plan for our K-12 buildings. And so facilities is a big part of that, you know? And, and Don talked a lot about that this evening of what does that space look like and not putting something down and ripping it up. You know, a lot of the libraries we see designed today are large, big rooms and you have the furniture in it that can move to meet the needs of what you're doing. You know, the, the only thing that really stays in one spot is the bookshelves. And even in some of those locations, the smaller bookshelves are on wheels and so forth. But we envision bringing you that plan that talks about some of our goals, K-12, and part of that would be the space determination at the high school at that point.
So the budget for this right now is a hundred and five thousand dollars? That's it? And so, I mean, we're not talking a renovation here, we're talking new carpet and take down?
New carpet, tearing down some walls, patching in, coat of paint. We'll still have ceiling and lighting to do, but again, that gets determined when the function gets determined, so that we can put everything in the right spot.
Yep. And a hundred and five thousand comes out of the capital?
Capital budget.
Budget. Are you bringing this to the board for discussion tonight simply to?
Yes. It's already in the agenda, in the budget plan for the hundred and five thousand dollars. And so at the same time, I don't want to take out?
A library.
One library, a major component of our school by just saying, Don, yeah, go ahead, you guys can do that. I just, I, so I'm, I'm asking, not necessarily for you to vote, but I want to know, are we okay with us going forward, knowing that for nineteen twenty school year, we're going to have one library in use and not two? We'll have all the adequate space, we'll have the, the books available. Principals are going to have to work on scheduling, librarian's going to have to work on making sure that we have everything there. We'll have extra books in the one room, so that if we have a run-on, on whatever book it might be, we should have availability for others to be checked out. Currently, we use some of that space for, at the end of the school year, we collect all of the textbooks and we store them in the library. So we're trying to figure out where's the best place for us to be storing the east, or the, the textbooks for English or math or science or whatever and kind of go from there. So, so, yeah, not necessarily asking for permission as much as, want you to tell me no, Don, this is not a good, we, we don't think this makes sense. Try to make it happen, so it's just during the school year, put the carpet in and don't worry about anything else.
Um, just one more question, can you?
One more question. Can you talk about, are you concerned at all about capacity? So now we've got, if, if we, if this moves forward, we've got all these kids trying to get into the East Library. I mean, you obviously see the numbers coming through there. I don't know how the study hall actually works in with the library, so.
I'm not concerned about it, looking at the numbers. It will work. We're opening up more seating in the computer lab. We're actually going to turn that Glaston Room into a, more of a quiet study, so those kids that want total quiet can do that. And the seating will be as much without the presentation of West area. And they don't go into that area at all anyways, because that's basically reserved for teachers, so. It'll, it should be fine.
With that, Nancy, we're trying to take some things that maybe, as Don mentioned, that were typically stored in there, to open up more of that space in the library. So we're not, we can move some of that out, so there is that more open space for seating and so forth at that point.
And my staff will be all in one place, as there'll be more people to help people and it should be fine.
Ultimately, we would like to be able to take that West Study Hall and, and turn that whole rectangle into all library, which then gives us some additional space for the library, so that adds another, you know, thousand square foot or whatever it is. By the time we take out some of these little classroom here and a, a office here and another one over here, we're, I don't know if it's a thousand, I'm guessing it's more than, way more than a thousand, because the, the, the study hall itself is more than a thousand square feet.
Probably close to the five thousand.
That we would be adding to the library.
Which is about eight or nine thousand.
Yeah.
As it is.
Had the referendum passed, would this have been work that would have been completed as part of the referendum?
Yes.
I mean, we're only talking a hundred and five thousand dollars here, so it's not like we're shaving off a lot of dollars on a future referendum, if you will. But this is, I mean, this is something that needs to be done. It was top priority in the referendum and now we're finding a little bit of a chunk to bite off, if you will.
Dave and I had both an agreement that we were going to replace that carpet, whether, whether the referendum passed or not, that blue carpet, blue carpet had to go, it was just dangerous.
I, I don't know if it was agreement, I think I was told.
Well, and the rest of us were saying it too. So I, I guess, you know, last but not least, and Don, you and I have kind of had this conversation. I mean, I think as we're looking forward and we're making great plans for our students, and as you talked about making this a destination, I'd like to see us look to our community and see if there's not someone out there, you know, maybe someone at this table who thinks it's a great idea to name the library after themselves or after, you know, the Kirkukard Library, don't you like the way that sounds?
Sounds good.
Um, no, just teasing, but we do have a lot of donors in the community. And obviously, you know, if you've sat through the scholarship, you know, opportunities, they're tremendous. And, and so we have a lot of people who care a lot about education. So I'd like to see us potentially talk to some donors who might have an interest in putting their name on this, you know, amazing destination library that we have plans for in the future, so.
One of the things, just a little bit off topic, but we've got some phenomenal donors and they truly do step up. At the same time, I've had visits, conversations with some of those donors, and they'd like us to kind of prioritize what we would think we should be asking for. And so if the library truly is at the top of the list, then let's put that at the top of the list. And right now, what happens is that there are seven good projects and all, whoever gets out of the gate first goes to ask for the money. And, and that needs to be our decision as to what, how do we want to ask the public for additional support as opposed to whoever comes up with an idea can go first.
Dave, school safety was number one on our survey last summer. And obviously, as we talked about the referendum, addressing safety. Are there other projects that are going on this summer to address safety, even though the, the referendum failed?
There's actually, um, at Decor, there's a project that's going to be going on where we're going to be changing the, um, the setup for where you come into the building. That one may be delayed a little bit, because I'm finding outdoors are really hard to get right now. But that is in the works. And then there's a couple of other projects that are not coming to mind right away, but they do kind of focus on the safety issue. Actually, one of, we have some room numbering issues at Green Tree and at Decorah, where the drawings and the room numbering system don't correspond to each other. Well, that's not very good for emergency responders who are going off our map. So we're going to get all of that cleaned up and in place. So there's, there's a lot of things that are going on on a, on a pre-regular basis.
And didn't we get safety grants?
We did, and we're just wrapping those up. Well, at least the, the part that I put in for, that's actually getting wrapped up this month. And that was a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, if I remember correctly. So it was quite a bit of money, so.
Tell them a little bit about Raptor Technology.
So, so with that, Joel, two other pieces, we'll have some more additional security cameras that will come in from that. So that's part of what David put in. And then we'll have a new visitor management system that we'll deploy, where we come in, we'll scan your driver's license when you come and you'll wear an actual picture ID when you come in our buildings. And so that's part of the safety grant money that we receive. So we're getting all of that stuff in-house and then that gets set out for the summer. So you'll see that in all of our schools next year and in this building, so.
Just on that note, will that be then the office secretary who's ever working the office desk will take care of all that when the visitor comes in?
Yeah, it depends upon the building. So at the high school, it'd be at the end of the building, not necessarily in the office, but it's the main entrance to each building.
And those will be the only two entrances available for people to enter in during the day, for visitors?
I believe so at the high school, yes. Currently, that's the way it is now. And so you have to funnel through the east or the west. We have buzz-in systems in all of those locations, so you have to hit the little buzzer and talk to somebody before you're brought into the building, so.
And the scanner and the ID, or the name tag printer will be at that entrance, so we don't have to assume that the visitor goes and finds the office to do that on their own? Okay.
They will be right when you walk in. So Badger and Silverbrook are easily set up that way. You're walking right into that office and that's where you're going. At East and West, they have a, a portable station that they roll out at each end of the building in the main hallway there. And that's where they buzz people in and that's where they would get their ID badge from.
Okay, thanks.
Obviously, cameras and secure doors are big safety, but I would argue that West Library carpet is a big safety issue as well. So if you look at trips and falls as a hazard, that's certainly one of them. Well, I appreciate the discussion on this. If there's more questions or concerns, then now's the time. Otherwise, we'll see this on your budget coming up in the next month? When do you present your capital budget?
Ah, that's already been presented.
Oh, it has?
I have to have, I have to be going with projects probably in March.
Okay.
So that I'm ready for the summer.
So is this in addition to what you've already presented in your capital?
It is, it is a clarification of.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Laura Jackson, discussion of Elevate and use of surveys.
Hello. Our fifth and sixth grade classes in the past have collaborated with Elevate to deliver a program to our students called Too Good For Drugs. It's part of the counseling program. Our counseling standards cover many different aspects. This is one of them. And in the past, Elevate has come in and provided some of that instruction for our students. We took a little hiatus from collaborating with Elevate for this purpose, while Elevate was undergoing some reorganization with their health educators and some program improvements. During the course of this year, our team at Silverbrook has worked on the, looking at the materials, looking at the correlation between those and the standards and the work that we do with our students with regard to drug and alcohol awareness and prevention. This is a prime age for us to start that. If we're starting in middle school or high school, we're starting too late. We need to start building up those skills, which include working with peer pressure, identifying strategies for keeping yourself healthy and avoiding, avoidance strategies for the students. So part of that program is that Elevate does a survey in order to give some pre and post data for the program effectiveness. With our policy in place, I brought those surveys for you to look at. Next meeting then, I would bring those for approval for use. While it does not, there are, there's a bulleted list in the policy of items that need to be, should those items be on surveys, need to be, the survey that needs to be brought to the board for approval. The area where the surveys fall for that is under the bullet illegal, antisocial, self-incriminating, or demeaning behavior. And that is because it is about drug use and alcohol use. And because those are the illegal behaviors that would be on the survey, it, it will be brought to you for approval. The questions on the survey are very age-appropriate for the students. And again, a pre and post. There's also a reflection for the teachers on the impact and the, or the delivery of the lessons.
Laura, how would the, how would the surveys be administered? Is this done in paper, is it done on the computer?
It is paper and pencil. The students fill the survey out and they are, they don't use their names at all. It's just initials that are used and grade level. I feel like I'm missing a word. Oh, and the day you were born, so like the twelfth or thirty-first.
And does Elevate then actually collect it to compile it, or how is the data compiled?
So the Elevate staff that are delivering the instruction would also collect the survey and then they will go through the, and put the data and go through the information and correlate the questions, things like that.
And then the feedback or the summary of that data would be shared with the district?
Correct. So they would share that with us. Some of it is really, as you see, for their program effectiveness, but they would be sharing that data with us. We would not be able to track it back to individual students at all, neither would they. And so that is a drawback of that, but also a benefit of that, because it's not, it doesn't identify whom. It's truly an anonymous survey.
The student code.
That's, go ahead.
How was that, who came up with that idea?
They did.
Elevate did?
Anonymous. When you're putting your first and your last initials and your birthday, that is not anonymous.
The number of the day of the, the, number of the day of the month. It's not date.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying that if someone, the first?
You really knew the class and the kids.
Yeah.
We could alter that.
Yeah, is there any way to, yeah, I, I'd like to see some other options for that.
Our board policy says, uh, policy three thirty-three says, parents and guardians shall be required to give written permission for the students to participate. So this is, was, is an opt-in type of survey, correct?
Correct.
A, a permission slip would be sent home saying that if you want your kid to participate, you need to check this box and sign it. Otherwise, the kid doesn't, if a permission slips not returned, the kid doesn't participate in the survey.
Correct.
So it's automatically not unless expressed written permission is given, not the other way around?
Correct.
Okay.
We're opt-in.
Okay.
For all of our surveys, unless it's one specifically from the school, it's always opt-in and not opt-out. Some districts are just the opposite. Some say you're automatically going to do it unless the parent opts you out. Our policy is just the other way around. You aren't going to do it unless you have permission from the parent to opt-in. And so ours is much more restrictive than some. And so that even though the initial part is there, it is not as much of an issue since parents have already given that permission. I still think we can change that around, so that it's not John Smith is J-S-O-M. You know, just, I think we can come up with something different than that.
So this has been done in the past in cooperation with Elevate, is that right?
Correct.
Can you describe if, if, I'm, I'm assuming the district found that to be a worthwhile process, which is why we're doing it again? Can you, can you comment a little bit on how?
Yep.
That information has been used in the past?
So, no, I can't. And the reason, um, the, I, I will comment on the past. So the, in the past, with the setup and, and I have to acknowledge that this was booked prior to my arrival in the district. So I may not have all of the detailed information. I've spoken with district staff and with Elevate staff. And part of the reason we went about this carefully is in the past, Elevate had a Elevate had a different staffing structure, and they used student interns for part of the instruction. We, as a system, did, may not, so I'm not sure, may not have had all of the communication components behind delivering this with Elevate in place in order to make it successful. So, Elevate has gone back, and they have licensed health educators who are experienced now providing the instruction. So, that's one significant difference. Another significant difference from the previous implementation is the time that the counseling staff, the administration at Silverbrook, and the Elevate team have worked together to plan this implementation for next year. So, communication has been, they've worked in conjunction with each other on that. So, that's a different issue. I am not sure of the surveys that were done in the past or what we did with them. But I, and I'll leave it at that.
Are we entering into some sort of a contract with Elevate?
They have a grant to provide the instruction to our district and some of the other Washington County districts. So, we would have a memorandum of understanding, which would say, "We have not yet signed that. The surveys are part of that."
And do we pay a fee for it?
We do not.
I think what Elevate does in Washington County is amazing. So, the fact that they would like to offer to help our district, I think is fantastic.
Thank you.
What kind of participation do we get with? Obviously, it sounds like our policy might be a little more strong than other districts. I mean, what kind of participation are they hoping to get? And what do we typically see from other surveys? Do you know? I guess I'm putting you on the spot, but.
So, hold on one second.
What was our participation in the YR?
Right around thirty-four percent in the, with the opt-in. What would Elevate? Elevate in order to get the data they would like with the number of students we have, if they obviously would like a hundred percent participation. Certainly, more than thirty-four percent, because you can be weeding out those voices that are giving you a feedback that would, you may be only selecting certain voices then. So, your feedback could be tainted in a certain direction when it is this specific to your course improvement.
I mean, I think collecting data is very important, obviously, because it will help us in the future to understand where maybe students are having problems or questions or difficulties, especially, you know, when it is in regards to drug and mental health and all of these issues. So, I guess maybe Policy Committee, I would like to see you take a look at that policy and see if there's a way to still make, still cover parents' concerns, but also have some higher numbers participating. I just feel like thirty-four percent out of our district is, like you're saying, I mean, you've got the really loud voices potentially speaking. And, you know, in most surveys, you're kind of throwing out the high and the low, and you're looking for everything in the middle. So, I guess I'd like to see Policy Committee, when you have time, take a look at that. I just feel like, as long as we feel the questions are within reason and there's, you know, a major level of anonymous, you know, feedback when you're taking it, I would just like to see us have better participation.
I, some, some districts have, it's opt-in, but you can opt-in for the year instead of each, each.
Individual survey.
Individual survey. And sometimes doing that all at once. And you could still opt-out for any.
Yeah.
Individual survey. But, it can streamline things for parents, and it's just so easy to miss things with information overload these days, so.
Laura, do you think the survey or a sample of the survey would be sent home to the parents so that when they do the opt-in or opt-out, they are seeing what we're talking about? I think if we can do that, the chances of getting better results, because there really isn't anything in this survey that's, it's bad. But, parents, if we just say it's a good survey, and they don't have the ability to look at the survey, the likelihood of them buying in a hundred percent probably isn't gonna be there. Is there a way that they can see the survey before we?
Yeah, we could make that available to them.
I think that would.
And I could put that in.
I think that would help.
Work with the MOU to state that.
I'd like to see if there's any way, when we do registration to start the school year, if I've got a kid going into fifth grade and this survey is administrated, is administered in fifth grade. Because when I'm doing registration, I'm filling out all kinds of information. Could I, you know, here's a box that, you know, Mr. Anger, your kid's in fifth grade in December will be given this survey. Do you, do you approve? Yes or no? And maybe there's a link to the survey right there if I wanna take a peek at it? Because I agree, I mean, there's so much communication that comes home from, whether it's in paper form or an email, that, you know, parents might miss out on filling out a permission slip, so.
I agree. Registration, you're almost forced to read everything, because, you know, you're filling out your checks and all of those things. So, I think that's a perfect time if we can make that happen.
Yeah, I strongly support the opt-in, but I'd like to make it easier for parents. And, and I'd like us to have more participation.
Thank you.
The survey itself, I've got no problem with the questions. I don't like the code at the front, because my kid with the name Tegan Angert, you would be able to figure out TO, you know, who he is. So, I don't think that's anonymous when you do a code like that. So, that's my only problem with the survey itself. But, otherwise, you know, I'm familiar with Elevate and what they do, and I think it's nice. Are we voting on this in the future or voting on the survey in the future?
So, you would be voting to approve the survey for the use simply because the topic of, the drug use is the topic and alcohol use is the topic, and those are illegal at that age.
When you do the vote, though, you'll be voting for an opt-in type survey? Because best-case scenario, even if we look at that policy, that policy will not change prior to when this needs to be approved. So, you're gonna be looking at an opt-in, not an opt-out.
All right, any more questions or discussion on this? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll turn to Andy for a 2019-2020 District Budget Drivers Discussion.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board Superintendent Kirkagard. I appreciate the opportunity to share some information. The district has a long, long history here of being able to have this discussion, make sure that we're meeting objectives and goals. And there it is. This is the worst part of the evening, the stress of getting the PowerPoint presentation going. Yeah, this admittedly, and I do want to reassure you. So, I will be bringing forward a budget this next Monday evening, the seventeenth. We will not be setting the levy. We will not be finalizing the mill rate, anything like that. With that being said, though, that takes place, we have a meeting in September. We will have the final budget and levy documents that will be approved in October, at the end of October. So, there's still plenty of time, though I do believe that we'll be able to incorporate any discussion or any wishes of the Board this evening into future budgets. So, just a little bit of this. So, we presented, or I presented, information back on March eighteenth. Things were very preliminary at that point in time. They are still fairly preliminary, but we do have additional information, new information that we're working with and, again, incorporating accordingly. This is really a strategic, in that that's these budget drivers and what they do in meeting our objectives and the goals. So, it's very strategic as a follow-up to the meeting that we had back in March. In future years, we will be following a little bit more strict timeline. And really, these are drivers or variables that help influence. We will communicate, share back and forth this evening. We will discuss, I will listen. And then, again, in future, future opportunities, I will incorporate these, these types of discussions, incorporate that into future budget documents accordingly. So, like I said, still very preliminary. In fact, there's almost daily information. In fact, Superintendent Kirkagard checked in with me this morning and said, "Hey, there might be some things finalized by week's end." Highly possible, we don't know yet. And I will discuss a little bit of that here in just a second. But, we will act on information as it becomes concrete and usable information. We don't know, but we need to be patient. That's not untypical, that's double negative on purpose. It is very normal to be at this point right now with a biennial budget and people politicking and strategizing in Madison. And as I mentioned, we will recommend to continue the budget process. We've historically done this. There are steps, and I will share those at the end of the presentation. But, we'll make sure that we do follow that process, our due diligence, and making sure that we bring back a solid budget during those strategic times in both September as well as October. Just a little bit of an update on revenues. So, quite often, what I'll say is, the words that are assembled and approved in Madison, quite often, that relates to, not, not always new monies, but just changes in revenue, kind of following those monies and understanding where they are. Like I said, almost daily communication between lobbyists. Some of my colleagues are professional organizations, and those individuals who are trying to understand what that means. And, again, trying to be patient as those are finalized. It is a political struggle at this point in time. There's a lot of positioning and whatnot with that biennial budget. Just as an example, so about a month and a half ago, Governor Evers brought forward a $1.6 billion proposal, fairly public in that presentation. And here, just within the last few weeks, the GOP said, "Hey, 500 million." So, they're fairly far apart at this point in time. And, you know, we're competing with Medicaid dollars, with road, road needs and whatnot. But, what the GOP essentially said is, "We're gonna be completed here fairly soon, and then, we're gonna hand it off, and we're gonna be done and walk away. It's a good offer, please take it. You should really consider taking this." So, that's where they're at right now, and that kind of relates to what Superintendent Kirkagard heard this morning, is that they might even be a little bit more ahead of schedule from that June thirtieth information that I received a couple of weeks ago. Again, largely unknown, this is, this is typical right now. So, just as an example, so the GOP, and this is based off of their proposal, they're talking about a $200 per student revenue limit increase. And when we multiply that $200 in year one, they're talking about $204 in year two of the budget. But, $200 multiplied by 6,500 kids, we're talking about $1.3 million, just approximate revenue, new revenue. They're also talking about a categoric laid, so all of the salaries and benefits for special education licensed individuals. Right now, we would receive money next year. Currently, the rate's at twenty-four and a half percent of those wages and benefits. They're talking about increasing that by two or three percent, translates to about $300,000. So, I've seen better years. This is conservative. It's possible that it might get a little bit better than this. But, right now, we're estimating on the conservative side potentially $1.6 million of new revenues. So, as we start looking on the expenditure side, and again, there's, we're waiting and being patient and making decisions, but these are some things that have taken place and that we're anticipating. So, staffing adjustments for 1920, based on this current year, 1819's deficit, we've already made staffing adjustments to make sure that we have the ability to bring forward a balanced budget next year. That's largely been done at this point in time. We do have a teacher framework for initial teachers as they progress through a three-year tenure in the district. And that increase from this year to next year translates to about a $200,000 to $300,000 increase that's being finalized right now. And then additionally, and this has been, it's a state number that's released, calculated and released with the 1920 Consumer Price Index or ACOLA, if you will. It's been finalized at 2.44%. You know, often, I think that's not necessarily just a wage increase. That is supposed to be incorporated in anything, just health insurance driven as well. And I will talk about health insurance in just a minute. But, often, it's referred to as a salary-type increase. But, we need to keep that in mind. And then, as well, the new teacher compensation plan, that's still being discussed. I believe it's either tonight or next week. But, it's not yet finalized, and we're trying to make sure that we stay patient and we make a decision that will be a long-term decision that'll allow us to have a sustainable future with that compensation for that, that big pool of staff. Very important topic. Health insurance. We are trending historically, we've been trending at about eight percent. We had a meeting last week with Willis, our benefit consultants, and they said, "You're trending this year so far at about a 10%." So, I gave a range of about 800 to 1,000, excuse me, 800,000 to $1 million. So, that's what we're looking at without a plan design. And if that trend continues, we have a renewal in January. But, that trend continues, we need to pencil in about $1 million for our health insurance this next year. Another benefit, and this is, this is not untypical at all. Dental, it's trending at a zero percent interest, excuse me, zero percent increase. We are self-insured on dental, just like we are with our health insurance, but it's been performing fairly well for the last year. It's a fairly static number, people receive that benefit. We do, we're taking a look at our other post-employment benefits. We're costing it out, so we're understanding what that looks like now that we have our retiree list and making sure that we identify monies available for that benefit. Right now, it's still that first group, like our tier-one group of people that are entitled to that benefit. And we will make sure that we reflect that in the budget accordingly. And if you do have any questions or any discussion at any point in time, please ask. A few other, and so, we talked about salaries and benefits, large majority of our expenditures, but some of the other types of things. So, as we looked at our allocations to schools and departments for 2019-20, we've held those allocations flat. That process is underway. Administration will review those requests, improve budgets accordingly. And we will bring that forward for formal approval in the near future. We've been studying community service funds. So, our Fund 80, it's a levy outside, what I call it is anything outside of a typical school day. So, before, after school, during school, but untypical type activity. We've been levying money, and this is something that we have to publicly disclose at our September annual budget hearing. But, we disclose all of the items that are in that activity. And really, what it is, is middle school sports. We allow anybody to come, any, any age-appropriate individuals to participate in our middle school sports programs. Any of our community groups that we have that fall under a certain tier for rental of our facilities, where we waive those fees. Additionally, and just doing a little bit of research in previous districts, we do have the ability to expand this slightly, taking a look at our school resource officers and allowing them the ability to not just act as police officers, but have them be a little bit more proactive, work with our students in those types of activities. We can code Fund 80, our resource officers to Fund 80. We can expand some of our before and after-school programming with some of our school partners, such as the city, the Y, the Boys and Girls Clubs. Take a look at some of these supplemental programs that actually enhance our learning process. I think, I think that those are some of the ideas that we need to consider with Fund 80. And then, as well, as we take a look, and Dave Ross told me, "Don't put utilities up, but we never know what's, what's gonna happen with utilities." I like to budget. If I have just a little bit of a cushion, I take a look at utilities, because we might have a really cold winter and a really hot spring and fall. Utilities are somewhere that I just don't wanna get caught being short. Transportation, some of these other areas, like our district insurance, not our health and benefit side, but our district insurance, we need to make sure that we budget accordingly. There's a lot of expenditures that are going up. I spoke with Tim Harder and technology and the tariffs. We're starting to actually feel that, where devices are being, coming to us five, 10, $20 higher than what they were. Bids or quotes that we receive are good only for several days rather than 30, 60, 90 days, just because of the fluctuations in pricing. So, we need to budget accordingly for those as well. So, I wanna jump into the actual budget drivers themselves. And this is, this is the meat, and I wanted to give that little bit of a background on where we are right now, because that lends us to jump into the previously used. And again, the district has a rich history of this. Number one, fund balance. It's actually a board policy, and it's where we want to meet our cash flow needs. We wanna make sure that we have reserves in case projects come up. We wanna make sure that we have a healthy balance for debt rating. So, when we incur debt and have the ability to repay that, that we receive favorable interest rates. The board policy talks about 14 to 18% of the budget. I've actually calculated it as of this year that we're in, not a projection for next year. But, June thirtieth of 2019, we will have a 17.8% fund balance. We're within that range. This year, we needed very little for cash flow. So, we did have a line of credit, but we're meeting that. And per the board request of administration, you've asked to have a balanced budget brought forward. So, I would anticipate that we maintain a similar fund balance for next year in the foreseeable future. Why I say a similar is that the fund balance is a dollar amount. And if we have the denominator of the equation to come up with a percent, and our budget continues to grow slightly, even a couple million dollars, 1.6 million, that actual fund balance, the percent could technically start to slowly decline. technically start to slowly decline, so we do need to make sure that we're aware of that. But we are on the high side of the range at this point in time. Number two, balanced budget. Again, fiscal responsibility, Policy 640, revenues equal expenditures. Again, the board has asked for administration to bring forward a balanced budget. We will do that. Action's already taken place, that will be possible. So we're going to give that a check mark as well. Number three, levy to the maximum allowable authority. This is something that I believe the district has done for the last several years. I would anticipate that unless there was some kind of change, that we would continue to do that. We will be bringing that forward, though it does take board authority and action to do so. Administration would recommend to do that. Number four, capital improvement fund. So this is our Fund 46. It's designated for facilities. We have the strategy to do that, and we will continue to do that in the future. There is a second bullet, I apologize, the font is not treating me well. But we will continue to utilize Fund 46 as well as Fund 41, which is our facilities' capital expansion fund. It is a board request that we continue with a 4% increase. We have budgeted for that, or will budget for that in this next 1920 budget. Number six, and this is one I needed a little bit of background information, I have connected with some other district administration. This is a 70/30 ratio of compensation, which is salaries and benefits, to all other classified as operational expenditures. At this point in time, we do have a 75% ratio, so we are meeting that need. I've calculated essentially taking all special ed and general fund revenues, excuse me, expenditures, and comparing that to all the services, the consumables, the equipment, but we are meeting that need. There's a 75/25 ratio at this point in time. So we're meeting that objective as well, or that budget driver. Compensation philosophy. So all indicators show that, and this is where are we lagging, meeting, or exceeding, or leading our market competitors for compensation and benefits. Depending on the employee group, we are at least meeting, if not exceeding, in those compensation philosophies, so we're strong in that area, which means that we're able to attract and retain staff. And it's cutting out. Number eight, and I'm going to see if I can get it, I can't get it. Number eight is, are there any other? Do we have any other areas? Is there any other discussion? And I will listen for a moment, I do have one that I'd like to share, but are there any other considerations? Those are typically the seven that we've had in the past. I think Mr. Ross indicated for his 12 years in the district, these have been brought forward for discussion, as well as making sure that we're doing what we can to meet those.
Fund 46 is capital improvement fund. Oftentimes, we refer to that as the Jackson Fund. Are you budgeting to put more money into that fund?
Yeah, at this point in time, there is not additional monies scheduled to be put into Fund 46.
Okay.
And interestingly enough, Fund 41 and Fund 46 are very, very similar. I could probably take an hour of your time and talk about the three different tiers of state aid that we receive and how that's calculated. And when Fund 41 was originally created, it was actually for more property-rich districts, where they rely more heavily on property taxes. A lot of districts got together several years later and said, hey, that's not necessarily fair to us. Fund 41 was created for property-rich to help curb fluctuations in state aid. So the DPI ended up creating Fund 46, which is almost the opposite of Fund 41. Coincidentally, we have both, and I think it's great that we have the ability to plan for the future with our facilities. Short of our staffing, our facilities are probably our next biggest asset that we need to make sure that we take care of.
Are we planning to use any money out of Fund 46 this year?
In 2019, 20, it's my understanding that we are not. Is that accurate, Dave?
He's on the carpet.
No. We could, so there's a five-year waiting period. Is that Fund 41 or Fund 46 with the five years? That's 46. So we established our Fund 46 five years ago, probably to the day. We do have the ability to spend the money as of July 1st of 2019, but at this point in time, we're not, we're not planning on spending the money there.
Joel, just one. The Jackson Fund, the Jackson account, that's actually money in Fund 10. Fund balance has been earmarked for Jackson. That's different than Fund 46. So with the proposed referendum, we were talking about using, I think there's a couple million dollars in Fund 46. We were talking about using some of that for offsetting some of the referendum dollars. The Jackson Fund, we did spend some of that last year when we bought the additional land by the facility where we were proposing to have that site.
Out of 46 or 10?
Out of Fund 10. Fund 46, we couldn't spend any of that until July 1st of this year.
So Fund 46, what are we using? It's a, how much money is in it? And first of all, how much money is in it?
I would love to tell you the dollar amount that's sitting there at this point in time. I don't know that off the top of my head, but I'd like to follow up with an email communication to you to let you know that dollar amount.
I think it's about $2.1 million.
It's a couple million, I think.
Or real, it's not five. It's not much more than two, it might be 1.9, it might be 2.1, but it's in that $2 million range. I know that for sure.
And we are able to start spending that July 1st. I guess just a thought is, we outlined all kinds of needs around our facilities, and the referendum failed, and if those needs are urgent needs, and we've got $2 million sitting in a fund to tackle security, safety, whatever, then I think it's time to start thinking about whether we use it. Because if we're waiting for referendums to pass, we could be waiting forever, and we've got $2 million sitting there that could be renovating the entire library, or it could be tackling all of our security, safety issues right now. So that's something, you know, we've always talked about that Jackson savings account. Well, the community didn't think it was time for Jackson right now, and we're sitting on $2 million that we could, we could put into Jackson. Do we need to rent, put that new blacktop on in Jackson, or whatever? So just something to think about with that Fund 46.
Thank you.
Andy, I would, I would take that a little further and ask, in light of the facilities tour, and what we've seen, and what Dave and his team are doing on a million and a half a year, is it reasonable to think that we would have a maintenance driver in the budget? Something that gives us a little more meat to be able to take care of the 1.2 million square feet that we've got in the district? I've done a little bit of homework, and I believe we're woefully under. And you know, credit to Dave and his team for doing what they're doing, but we've, I believe optimized the experience in the classroom at the expense of some of the buildings. And how do we not only take maybe Fund 46, but how do we invest in these facilities so that they don't end up costing us, you know, 2X down the road?
Yep. So I fully anticipate, I think it's on about October 26th, that second board meeting, that we'll be setting the formal levy, setting the mill rate, that probably Tuesday morning, about the day after, if not Wednesday, I'm going to start work on the 2020, 21 budget. So what I might recommend is, thank you for the input. I'll work with Superintendent Kirkard to take those into consideration, if it's the wish of the board. And then what we could do is, where we have a couple budget drivers right now, with the use of and the creation of Fund 41 and Fund 46, why don't we create a little bit of a different driver and spin it into what's the spend plan for that?
LED lights, obviously. You could buy a lot of LED lights for $2 million, and those have a return to them, you know? It's not a, it's not an improvement that's going to have to be redone 20 years down the road, sort of thing, I'd be, but anyway.
You know, the one consideration, as I was reviewing the presentation and trying to understand and make sure that we're meeting both yours as well as the community's needs. We have had a drop in the mill rate over the last several years, and I know that during the referendum, there was questions about the debt of the district, and how much is it, and between the principal and interest. You know, if the, if the district, or if the board specifically, if you had wishes to maintain a specific mill rate, we could have discussions surrounding that. Last year, 2017, 18, it was $8.12, $8.15? 15? You know, it's dropped now, and we talked about recapturing that through the referendum, but if the board wished, we did defees a couple of million dollars, which is essentially levying for future payments. That goes into an interest-bearing account, and if we were able to maintain the current mill rate, or even a previous year's mill rate, to make sure that we're fiscally responsible with the repayment of that debt, it might not be a bad consideration. And again, we have until October 26th, or whatever that meeting date is, to finalize that information, but it is an option, and I'd even consider that then, because we're talking about a balanced budget and some of the other drivers, and making sure that we maintain a proper fund balance to meet our needs. Can we have a fiscal obligation to the taxpayers to maintain a certain taxation rate, you know, is there something like that that should be considered as well?
Is that number eight?
That's number eight.
Yeah.
Others, are there others? And I can, let me, I'm just going to go, because we're near the end of the presentation, but that's eight right there, hanging down in the bottom. Other, up for discussion, please.
Well, I think, you know, whether it's maintaining the mill rate, so are you suggesting that the mill rate could go down even more in the 2019, 2020 budget?
I don't know yet, so I don't, I don't want to say, because I haven't made that calculation. We can make some assumptions. I don't know. It's really going to be dependent on the property values when they come in, again, a denominator based on how much money we levy. So I don't know if it's going to drop.
Well, considering some of the criticism that we endured during the referendum, that we need to learn to live within our means, I would say dropping the levy, or not taxing to the max, would be detrimental to us, and I'm not sure why we would even think about doing that personally.
And plus, I heard loud and clear that people think we have too much debt in the Westman School District, and if that's what's preventing people to vote yes on a referendum, then let's maintain the mill rate and pay down even more debt, if that's what our community wants. Dropping the mill rate just to see how low we can go, I think is detrimental to our, to our facilities, to our staff, to our students. I don't want to tax the crap out of the community, but, but we need to, you know, be able to pay down the debt, if that's what our taxpayers are telling us.
Well, and just to echo Paul's comments, I mean, obviously, we have a lot of capital things that we have put off. The fact that we have carpeting in that building that we can assume is at least 40 years old is frightening. First 48, thank you, even more frightening. So, you know, the idea that we've put off items, but we also need to make sure that we have this balance with our students. Obviously, we still want to be a destination district that people are choicing into, that type of thing. I mean, I'm just not in favor at all of decreasing the mill rate at all. I mean, I guess you'd have to really come up with some amazing plan to sell me on a plan to do that. I think we should actually look at increasing it, and look at some of these projects that we haven't been able to get done. I see Dave Ross is happy dancing in the back room as I get on my rant here. But I mean, we really need to prioritize some of these things. We can't have carpeting that's 48 years old, and you know, we can't have projects that Dave is, you know, holding together with binder twine to try and get things done. I mean, we really need to look at some of these things, and if that, you know, requires us to raise the mill rate, well, then so be it.
And we, and our taxpayers are telling us we can't have any debt. I mean, people are...
Well, the word was live within your means, but we don't sell anything, so we have no means, but apparently some people don't understand that. So I mean, I really just want to point out, like, I'm not in favor of decreasing the mill rate.
So Andy, can you clarify? We can't raise the mill rate to pay for more carpet at the school. We can't raise the mill rate to do a lighting project. What you raise the mill rate for is to pay off future debt.
Defees the debt, sure.
Okay, and so, so that's the only thing that, you know, once, because the state's going to tell us exactly how much money we can assess, and Andy, you clarify it.
Exactly, that's accurate. So it's defeesing debt, so it's essentially levying for debt payments now that would be paid in the future. So we, again, we have debt for the next 10 years or so. We have, over the past several years, levied money for those future payments, and we could continue to do so.
I like that we have the lowest mill rate in the area, and I want to keep it that way, so I'm not in favor of reducing it. And as long as we stay the lowest, I'm okay with inching it up slightly in order to pay off the debt. Would reducing our, I realize that the state equation is really complicated. Would decreasing our debt have a negative impact on the amount of money that the state gives us? Okay.
Completely independent.
Okay, good.
Yeah, great question. So next steps, and I'm going to, I'm not going to go back, because there might be something. We're going to monitor new information, we're going to continue to make sure that we're staying informed. We will update accordingly. We're going to follow those historically used timelines. We will be meeting in September. We will be finalizing everything at the end of October. We will be setting the tax rate and the levy and all that as of early November. That's, that's the timeline that's required by state statutes. We will be presenting, or I will be presenting, a preliminary budget next Monday on June 17th. And really, the purpose behind that, we will not be setting the levy, we will not be setting the mill rate, but all that process does, and it's brought forward every year at this time, or maybe even as early as May, I've seen it as early as April, I've done it as early as April, it really kickstarts the year, and it gives the district the authority to begin incurring expenditures. I don't have a lot of detail of revenues and whatnot. It's a really preliminary budget, but it really is the board authorizing, yep, we're a business, we need to start spending, let's have a budget in place. We will continue to refine it and improve it and finalize it, but it is there to initiate spending for next year. We will, as I've mentioned, and this is very big, I'll say this every opportunity I get, because I do like an audience to come, on September 23rd, Monday, at 7:00 PM, we will be conducting that meeting of the electors. So that will take place, just as always does. This is a date that was actually determined last year, if you remember, that was one of the resolutions, and we will be setting at this meeting the following years, but we will be having that meeting in September. Public forum, voting, resolutions, just like we always do. What other discussion, what other questions might you have?
Andy, going back to the health insurance, the projected 8% to 10%, the $800,000 to $1 million, is that, is that the grossed-up number to the district, or is that net the district's portion separate from the employee share?
Yep. So without final numbers, that is the district's portion of that.
Okay, thank you.
The district is about $11 million in health insurance every year, 8% to 10%, so, great question. Any other questions that you might have that I can answer, listen to? Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next week. Jen Ginnerman, District Continuous Improvement Plan Update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited to share with you the work that we've been working on throughout the year. Earlier this school year, we talked about our district continuous improvement plan, and just the areas that we were going to focus on. In each area, we always have a goal as well as strategic actions. And so I'm here tonight to give you an update on the strategic actions and all the things that we've been doing. As you recall, this is our district image to really articulate those areas of emphasis, as well as just those things that are important to us as far as leadership and meeting all students' needs. Throughout the strategic actions, what we'll do is, we'll talk about things that we've met, or they're on target to meet. Those will be shaded green. Things that are yellow or an orange's color will be things that are in progress, and you'll see the difference throughout the year. And then there are some things that are red, because we discontinued them, or we needed to revise those. And we did share a few of those in January when I gave an update then. Before I talk about the specific goals and the strategic actions, I do want to take a step back and just outline that process that we're taking. Just like the budget, and just like your taxes, we kind of are going to start, we'll have this year's going, our strategic plan for this year, for 2018, 19, but next week, we'll be talking about a preliminary plan for the following year. And so over the next couple of months, we'll be working really in both areas, or both years of our plan. In the area of student learning, a lot of our goals are focused on literacy and mathematics, and really, our measurement is that state assessment. We don't have that information yet, and we won't have that by the end of this year. And so if you recall, our goals were to be at a certain percentage or higher, that's going to allow us to report to you whether we met the goal or not. gonna allow us to report to you whether we met the goal or not without waiting for that data to be released from the state. We won't have those final numbers being able to be released from the state until fall of next year. And so, we revise the way we write the goals so that we can say to you if we met the goal or not. For student learning, here are the areas that we had for our strategic actions. We have it broken down by each goal as well as who's the lead for each piece. Again, I'm speaking for the team and really help organize our efforts around this, but know that when it comes to technology and SFTP stuff, that's totally Tim, and the safety stuff, that's totally Dave. So, we really do work in partnership. For the strategic action for goal one, I'm excited to share, even today, we had professional development around the area of literacy. And we just, whether it's literacy at the elementary level or discipline literacy at the secondary level, the work on just providing teachers feedback and coaching in their instructional practices, we spent a lot of time on that, and that will continue for next year. In the area, we had also for goal three, we focused on a little bit of math, just reviewing our assessments and what we're using and which time. I'm happy to say that this team that worked on this, they were able to find out that we needed to provide additional intervention training to a small group of staff and really build their capacity to meet our students' needs. And so, that's one thing we've already accomplished this year. One of our goals, really in the area of technology and talking about that one-to-one rollout, Tim talked early about that plan as far as the libraries and more of that technology plan, but this really is a part of that technology plan and as we move forward. So, even today, the secondary teams, they were learning and spending time a little bit around that digital one-to-one environment, whether it's Canvas or how to integrate those things for next year, and then planning for even a virtual day for some of our students on that ACT day. So, that's how they spent their time today, and they'll continue that throughout the summer and then into next year. So, that area, that strategic goal has been met and will continue. For one-to-one technology, that won't be a district goal or a strategic action anymore because really, we've done so well that it's really just at the secondary level, and that's gonna continue on the school improvement plans as an individual thing rather than a big Along with the professional development with the one-to-one technology, the professional development that was provided today really was developed around the teachers' needs and the feedback that they were given to principals and other people. And so, it really was designed around their needs and what is their best next step, because everyone's at a different place with different things. And so, today was really about everyone just learning a little bit more for their next In the area of engagement and customer satisfaction, we had four goals. One was looking at the compensation model. The second one was focused on open enrollment. The third one was focused on the logo or our brand as a system. And the fourth one was around an employee engagement survey. You'll see here on the right how we've outlined just really what we've been able to do this year, and you'll see that they're all either yellow or green, so we've made a lot of really good progress. With number one, the goal around the compensation models, the one reason that it is not green is because the administrator one is going to be reviewed this summer. So, our goal was to revise all staff handbooks and look at that piece of information. We haven't done the administrator one, and so, that would be our next step for summer, but that will be done before next year. So, that's why that one is yellow. For open enrollment, we had a couple people working on this, and this is probably a bigger conversation, and looking at just, we already have our principals, they call, you know, families who are opening and rolling out of the system, and we've looked at that information. And for some of them, it's just, one of our action steps could be letting them know about the size of Silverbrook a little earlier. Some, they just never enter our schools. And some, you know, maybe they choose to come when it's only at the high school level. But Don's gonna speak a little bit about that open enrollment, because that will be a piece of discussion that we'll need to talk a little bit more about.
So, Nancy has been working not just with our logo and our marketing, but also with our open enrollment piece. And so, we have found, based on the surveys, that kids either don't enter the system at all, or they move at a certain point in time because of location. They might go to Jackson and the elementary, but then it's just as close to Germantown and/or Slinger to go to the high school than it is to come this direction. And so, the size of the schools does make a difference for some kids. The location makes a difference for some. Very, very few students enroll in Silverbrook, Badger, or the high school and eventually open enroll to another school. That doesn't happen very often. Typically, if they open enroll, they go before they get to Silverbrook, before they get to Badger, before they get to the high school. One of the things that we would like to focus on is to do a better job of sharing the wide breadth of activities and opportunities we can provide to our kids, that we truly do have as many, if not more, opportunities than anybody else. And so, there really is an opportunity for every student to be successful because we have such a wide breadth of opportunities. And so, we're gonna do a better job of focusing on all of our different AP classes, all of our different CTE classes, all of what we can do in Silverbrook, and all the things that happen there that don't happen in other places. We have three different foreign languages in fifth grade. Well, that's something that we need to pat ourselves on the back and talk about it, and we haven't done that. And so, Nancy's got a couple ideas. We're looking at a, not only the newsletter, but also actual mailing to all of the patrons a couple times a year to see if that can help. And so, hopefully, we'll continue to work on that as we go forward.
Another piece that we are doing for the open enrollment in hopes to not only increase that, but also meet all of our students' needs, is we're expanding our online Wobola Academy. And so, this is online learning that in the past, maybe we had it restricted to so many seats, and now Laura's been working to expand that, so we'll possibly have more people coming for just that, where maybe in the past, they went to a different school for So, for goal four, this one was focused on the employee engagement survey. And so, this is really creating that feedback loop. And what we did this year is we created a survey, and we deployed that to all staff, and that includes everyone from, anyone who's upstairs as a secretary to custodial staff and food service as well as teachers. Once we got that information in, we've already communicated that. That also went to you, that summary of what the feedback was from the staff in different, from different job categories. Since then, what I've been doing is working with building principals, and so, we were able to roll out that information and have a conversation around what are those best next steps. So, what that may look like, we shared, like, we shared each school results with the building principals, and whether it was Friday or tomorrow, they'll be touching base with all of their staff to say, hey, these are our results. Let's talk about things that we did really well, really well. And a lot of people are saying, we're really a collaborative group, but maybe someone, some aren't feeling as informed as some other people. And so, each building is having those conversations, and that's gonna drive those action steps for next year's school improvement plan as well as possibly the leadership priorities for next year. You know what? If our staff isn't feeling informed, let's hear from them of what we can do better, and then let's carry that out and get feedback along the way.
How often is the staff engagement survey given?
We, our plan is to give it every two years, and the reason for that is to give time for implementation. Some other places do it twice a year, some do it once every five years. And so, we're trying to work with that happy medium of how often is, how often do we need the information that we can actually act on it? So, our plan right now is to deploy the staff employee engagement every two years, and then opposite of that would be the parent satisfaction.
I guess I realize that you need time to implement, but at the same time, I think there might be some questions that could be asked on a more frequent basis?
Yep, and that will be a dipstick, like a dipstick survey. So, for example, if, let's just say, one of the areas that was lower was feeling informed, okay? So, one of the things we're thinking of for next year is really coming back and reviewing what are all our different communication paths and who's it going to and how frequently? So, you know what? Throughout the year, we may send out a survey that's three questions about communication and how informed are you, rather than the whole survey.
Okay, good.
And that would be part of our plan for next year. But so far, our goal for this year was to create the survey, deploy it, communicate the results, and then work with building principals so that we all have some steps for next year.
Oh, yeah, that's a huge accomplishment. Thank you. Was it, how was it ensured that it was anonymous for the staff?
We did lots of communication, and as the group talked about survey responses earlier, I was back there, and I knew our response rate was high. We actually had a 70%, response rate from our staff. And again, that's teacher, custodial staff, secretary. So, we really communicated a lot about the survey and that it was anonymous, we're not tracking anyone. We did ask for job categories, because if I, let's say I work with the facilities people, well, then I need to know if they're not feeling informed or if they're not feeling that their input is being valued. And so, that's the only way we've broken it down, is to look at the years, the job categories, as well as the time in the system, so that we can help drive our next steps as well as, you know, just meeting the needs of, you know, the people that we work with.
So, it's not submitted via their work email or?
They, they were all emailed, and they got a link to complete the survey.
Okay, so from the link, which is, goes through an encrypted?
Yep, we don't collect the emails or anything like that. And any of the summary information that I provided to you or the whole staff, everything was big picture themes, nothing was identifiable or like this specific school. So, nothing like that was shared.
If you remember last board meeting, the elementary principals were here and discussed. And Lenny said, one of the best successes that he had was just that face-to-face. They did, they do the rounding, and they, he literally, and so, it's not anonymous. It's Don asking Kurt, Kurt, do we have any issues? Do we have any questions? And it really provides with that opportunity for that one-on-one interaction at the same time. You have to be comfortable giving that interaction, or it's not gonna happen. And so, but I, you know, when you look at some of the elementary results, their support of the system, their communication, their results showing that they're engaged and involved and part of the process, a significant amount of that is based on that one-on-one face-to-face interaction that they have on a regular basis. But that requires a trust factor, both sides.
And that's really taking that, like, that step of leap of faith and that trust to build with the staff and the principal, but also with us as among our leadership team. So, we broke this information down and had some hard conversations. So, we looked, I supported principals to say, hey, this is what your staff is saying, here's your dashboard, and, you know, these are some things you're gonna wanna talk about. I gave them a template to deploy the information. I gave them a couple activities, you know, so they weren't just struggling. But then, what we also did is, I wanted to know, and for Don and all of us, we wanted to know, how do the principals feel? And guess what? We have some ideas. We have some areas that we can develop some action steps in and that we've already started to have conversations. But what we did is we opened that door. It's not a gotcha. It's, hey, help me be better, help us be better as a team. We're all here to learn and grow.
So, I'm gonna do leadership team survey next week at a leadership, so to give me some feedback. And depending on the feedback I get, I might even share that with you. I don't know for sure. Just, but I am going to get some feedback from the leadership team next week so I can figure out what I can do different and what I can't do different, kind of go from there.
The next area is the safe and secure area, and this is where we had three goals, really talking about the safety, the training, the security throughout our system and looking at those practices, as well as, goal number two was really in the area of trauma-sensitive schools. All of our staff, I think it was today, that everyone completed three hours of trauma-sensitive schools training throughout this year. So, people did it at different times, but it really opened that door for, you know what? How are we handling these situations and how can we, you know, better serve our students? And so, that's been completed. And then, also, we had some data privacy pieces. Some of them, Tim talked a little bit about with the grant, the safety grant where Dave and Tim combined efforts together. One of the biggest pieces that we did this year, and I, we, it's really Tim. So, thank you, Tim. But one of the pieces that we were able to do is have a separate contract for vendors as a data privacy piece. So, as a vendor, they often say, hey, here's our contract, you know, you agree, we sign, and that sort of thing. But we actually, this year, worked through a process where we were really the first ones in the state to work with this vendor to say, hey, here's our contract too, because our privacy, it's really working both ways. It took a little bit longer to have those conversations and work through that contract language. However, in the end, we really are putting the student's information, like, that's our first, you know, point of focus, that we want to make sure that that is safe and secure regardless of a contract coming from a vendor or ours. We want to just make sure we're covered on all aspects of that. So, that's something that you'll see here, there's a green piece that we've been able to complete. In the area of effective and efficient, we had two goals. One was on the 70%, 30% ratio, and Andy had addressed that of, as far as where we have been this year. So, that's green. In the second goal, this really focused on our district continuous improvement process of having a common process at all of our schools. And if you recall, in January, I said, you know what? Our goal was maybe a little bit too big, and so, what we needed to do was stop and revise it. And so, that's really what we did. Our K through 4 up to sixth grade, they're all using a common data process. And really, if you haven't heard any, well, I know you've heard people speak about it, especially at the school board, the principal reports to the school board as far as the data into action, but this is our foundational text to help us all really understand how we're gonna use student information to drive our instruction. With our adjustments to the strategic actions, we revised our plan for secondary, and our secondary team, we need a little bit more time to really study and think about what that would look like at the secondary level. And so, I'm happy to report that we've been able to meet all of our strategic objectives. And then, next year, as we look at, as our whole system, 4K through 12, we'll all be following the same data process and speaking the same language throughout our system. If any of you have not been a part of our data summits at our, during our professional days, I really would encourage you to come and join them. We've had a great learning opportunity for principals to observe other principals and see how those professional learning communities are growing. And it's just, I know I love it, but anyone from the outside, even if you don't love data, it's still really exciting because it's about meeting the students where they're at and figuring out the best plan, you know, to move forward for our students. Don had mentioned the rounding conversations that the principals do, and they share with me their rounding notes of things that are going well and things that, ah, maybe we wanna improve a little. And the other day, I was reading one, and one of the teachers commented on, one of the strengths that, something that was going well in their school was that the data into action process was uniting their whole team around the same efforts. And I just, I saw that, and I just thought, awesome, you know, because that's really what we're here to do, is really work together and meet the students' needs. So, I'm happy to say those areas are green as well. As I said earlier, our process for this is kinda like taxes. You're always in a couple different years. And so, what we'll be doing next week, I'll be sharing with you some preliminary ideas for our district continuous improvement plan later on next school year. Once we get the results, we'll be able to tell you if we met or didn't meet our goals. And then, once the data's released from the state, that's when I'll be able to give you that assessment update to say, this percentage of students met in reading or math or whatever area and whatever grade level. But I'm not able to do that till probably November of next year. With that, there's another layout that you can look at as well, just to outline the process. With that, is there any questions or discussion points as far as the district continuous improvement plan?
I know that we survey our parents, and I know that we survey our staff. Do we do a specific survey for our seniors outgoing, such as, you know, greatest thing that you learned in Westman, things that you feel need to be improved upon to, you know, provide learning?
Yes, and so, before I speak to that, I just want to address the parent survey. Some schools- Some schools have been doing that throughout the last couple of years. We're going to streamline that. And really, with Don's leadership, we're going to survey parents, like fourth grade parents at the end of elementary to not only ask about their year, but about their elementary experience and then high school experience. So, we're going to modify that a little next year. So, you'll see that kind of outlined next time on our next plan because we'll have to develop that and deploy that, the same as we did this year for staff. So, I just want to clarify the parent one. We'll be working together as a team and deploy a common one next year. As far as the senior survey, that's been, really been something that the principals have chosen to do. And yes, we do do that. We have, in the past, we use school perceptions for that. Again, we switched over to this one, to Qualtrics is the survey system that we use. I partnered with a high school counselor this year to really develop and check in with the principals of, is this the information you're looking for? Tell us, you know, how were, how is your overall learning in this department? That information is used from the building principals as far as any next steps, you know, for maybe departments or feedback that kids had for, you know, just different groups. So, we do deploy it. It's at the end of the school year. Oftentimes, people are asked to complete that prior to getting their cap and gown.
And we're a hundred percent sure that happened this year?
I know it was deployed. Last I checked, we had like four hundred responses.
Okay. I, I just, in talking to my senior, I asked these questions of her in the car. And I thought she had some very genuine, good comments that, that I thought could be really beneficial. And I thought, well, do we do this? And then, I guess my next question would be, you know, our job is to prepare them for whatever comes next for them. It might be college, it might be tech school, it might be jobs, apprenticeships. Have we ever looked at doing a survey that's one year out with those seniors to say, okay, you've had a year in of, of whatever you're doing. Did we do a good job? Were you prepared? Do, do you think that, you know, what could we have done better to prepare you more? I mean, we could ask them, you know, it'd be obviously an opt-in, but I mean, you could ask them for a different email address or something like that. And, and, you know, I just think that would be a really good tool for us. Well, I think, you know, test results are important, blah, blah. But, you know, I think we'd all like to know, did we really prepare our students? I mean, that's a critical piece for a school board. If we're not preparing them for the future, I don't care what they got on their test. If, if this person says, you know what, I was ill-prepared and flunked out of college because I had no idea it was going to be this rigorous or whatever the answer is, that, that's really a warning signal for us as a board then and as administrators that we need to make some changes.
We, we, I can jump in. We did talk about that and so, we did ask for an additional email. What often happens though is kids are getting different emails and that, or they don't check that one. That, so if we have a way to con, like, connect with people, that would be ideal, but there is no guarantee. But the school, the high school counselor that I worked with this year, that is something that we talked about to say, hey, how can we try and reach, reach out to people and not, not just who, those who went to college, everyone and say, hey, were you prepared? So, that's been something that we've thought about. We just haven't really outlined those steps to complete that and take that next step. I think we'd have to make that a priority, which we can do. But other than academic data, we often don't know for sure. It's just word of mouth.
Just a couple of quick comments. We are looking at next year to do a exit survey for the kids in each of the buildings. So, as their fourth graders going into fifth grade, we would do an age-appropriate fourth grade survey. You see, you know what, what were some of the things that we could do different? When they're leaving sixth grade to go into Badger, what are, what were your thoughts? When you're leaving eighth grade to go into the high school as well as the high school when they're leaving? And so, do an age-appropriate survey as an exit survey for every building, okay? The, the question about that one-year follow-up truly is great data. It's extremely difficult to get ten percent back, eighteen percent. And so, that, that doesn't mean to say that we don't try, but that's nationwide, it is, that's a tough one to get much data back because they, we don't have their, the right stuff, they don't respond back and, but that doesn't mean we don't try. But that is a hard one.
And we do have one survey where we do need that information. And actually, one of the people who were, who was working on it this year, they actually ended up on social media to say, okay, what school are you in? And that was a way that we were able to find that information. We would just, you know, not that we want to do that for everyone, but.
So, do we see the results of this senior survey then? I, I don't remember ever seeing those, this, this survey.
I don't believe they've ever come to the school board. It's really been from the principals at the building level.
So, are there questions on there such, and not word for word, but, you know, is there a question on there such as, what could we have done better? And, and I mean, is it pretty open-ended that, that they get to say or as opposed to, we did a great job or we did an okay job or, you know?
It's a variety of questions. It's really, part of it is also talking about like, how much did you access the, the career in counseling lab? You know, that sort of thing. And some of it is really just open-ended about, you know, how was your learning in this, in this department? Nothing's going to be about a specific teacher or a specific class.
Right.
But when we go through the themes of all the open-ended, you know, they write a lot. And so, it's just looking for those themes. But principals, really, they haven't brought that back to the board. If that's something you want to hear a little summary about, we can talk about that more.
I, I would absolutely want to hear that summary. I mean, I just thought it was really interesting data because I expected, you know, the students to say, wow, this teacher was blank and this teacher was great. And, and really, most of her comments had to do with lack of discipline. And, you know, concerns at the high school of, you know, that there's, you know, a fair amount of students who have no rules or feel they have no rules. I was just, I was blown away that that was her comment. I really expected it to be, you know, Mrs. X, Y, Z was great and, you know, it was not that at all. So, I guess, I think that's important information for the board to see. It's summarized, of course. I don't want to read four hundred pages of, you know, open-ended questions.
What we can, we can talk about whether it's a report or just a, you know, an email communication or we can figure that out. But one of the things I would always encourage principals in any, with, if you're going to survey, you have to have a plan for using the information. If you're just looking at it, it's a waste of time. And so, really, as we work throughout the summer, we need to take those themes and say, what do we need to do differently? And that should be in our school improvement plan for next year. So, that's my little piece of that survey plug is I don't want to waste anyone's time, but if we're going to do it, let's use it. And then, let's share the results.
For sure.
Any other thoughts or questions with the district continuous improvement plan? Riveting stuff, I know. All right, well, I'll be back next week to talk about just preliminary ideas for next year. And if you have other ideas at that point too, we can talk about it. We won't finalize anything next week because we still need to get some of our student data back to really understand, like, and get our own feedback. But you'll have some ideas to move forward with over the summer.
Great, thank you, Jim. Chris, turn it to you for a policy committee report.
All right, so the policy committee met tonight immediately before this meeting. And our single agenda item was to set out our plan for this next year. And our plan for this year is to examine more closely the board policies in the three hundred series, which is the instruction series. And that is policies around district curriculum and instructional arrangements to assist teachers and students to learn. So, there are about seventy-five, if my estimate is right. And so, we've got our work cut out for us. So, the policy committee will go through these and it's very possible some will not change at all. And, and that would be the recommendation of the committee. If that's the case, the board would not see those. There may be very minor changes for Fast Track or there could be some changes that would go through the regular process. So, we have our work cut out for us, but I, we've got a, we've got a great committee. And of course, all board members are always invited to each of the committee meetings. So, that's the only item that we had talked about. So, that would conclude my report.
Great, thank you. Superintendent Kirkegaard.
So, I have several things that I'd like to report to you. First of all, I thought we had a very successful graduation on Sunday, both east and west. I was extremely impressed with the organization, the student involvement, the principals, the faculty. I just, I was, that was my, obviously, my first West Bend graduation, but I was impressed with both east and west. I thought they did a great job. Second one is that summer school starts next Monday. We believe our data, our numbers are going to be very strong, similar to last year. Hopefully, by next Monday, I'll give you a updated report on where those numbers are actually at, okay? Tomorrow night, I'm going to go to the Jackson Village to their, their meeting. They just asked for an update of where we're at with facilities. And I will tell them that we really haven't done much, but I said I would come and share with that and talk to them a little bit about our facilities, reassure them if there are things that need to be done at Jackson and we're not going to put them on hold just because we might someday have a referendum. We will prioritize anything that needs to be done, will be done as quickly as we can. And that at some point in time, within the next school year, the board will have to make a decision, what are the next steps and kind of go from there. On tomorrow, we will be interviewing for the AP West, for the assistant, oh, excuse me, the, the assistant principal for AP, for West High School. And so, we had a little close to thirty applicants interviewing nine and hope to narrow that down to three or four. And we will do the following interview next Monday and hopefully have a new AP at West soon. If you haven't had an opportunity to look at that Skyward video, Nancy sent some things out. Skyward came and did a video on some of our teachers as well as Mr. Harder to talk about the coding that's taking place in the elementary. And it really, it really was an excellent video. And it was some very positive PR. And so, thank you, Tim. Thank you, teachers at Fair Park. I can't remember, was there another school? Was it Green Tree in Fair Park? Did a great job, was an excellent video. Board meeting times, okay? We had discussed at the last meeting was, is there, do, do we want to go a little bit earlier? Is that okay with the board? And so, we suggested either five-thirty or six. And so, you need to let us know so that Dev and Nancy can put it on the calendar. And so, not for next meeting, but for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year, is a five-thirty board meeting. Does that work for everybody, okay? If it does, then we'll set it at five-thirty. If you want it at six, we'd set it at six. If you want it at six-thirty or leave it at six-thirty, we can do that as well. And so, part of that decision will have an impact on our, our policy committee because if we, we truly want to be done with policy at least fifteen minutes before the board meetings. So, policy does have the ability to start their meetings as soon as four o'clock if we need it to. And so, if five-thirty works for everybody, we would look at five-thirty start time for our school board meetings. Is that okay with everybody? Anybody have any issues with five-thirty? Okay, so, so we will plan that. And Nancy, if you can get that on the website and Dev, make sure we have that changed.
And that'll start in July.
That'll start in July. The last information that I had to share was in May, I was contacted by Craig Sedonico, the mayor, as well as Kevin Steiner from West Bend Mutual and Tim Schmidt from Delta Defense. They are forming a committee to look at facilities, okay? And it's not a school facility committee, it's not a school district committee. It has no authorization by the board. It has no authorization by the superintendent. That's all they would like to do is have the opportunity to go in and look at our facilities and have an opportunity to meet with Mr. Ross to talk about what some of the things are that we've done, what are some of the things that we're looking at going forward. They would then give the board a summary of information item sometime in either September and or October for you to consider. It's not anything binding. It's not, it's your job to make the decisions. They're not going to suggest that you need to have a forty million or thirty million or even a referendum at all. They're just looking at what they believe are some of the issues with our facilities. And at the next board meeting on next Monday, then I believe Kevin Steiner and Tim Schmidt are planning on coming to the meeting and have a discussion item. And they'll just share with the board what they hope to accomplish through their committee structure. Craig, I believe, has a city council meeting at the same time, so he can't come. But that's, like I said, that's all they're asking of us or asked of me was can they have access to the facilities? And I said, yes, because we would give access to anybody, okay? And they wanted to have access to Mr. Ross as well. And so, and we'll see what happens. And it will just be one more piece of information for you as you make difficult decisions going down the road. So, that's what I had.
Great, any questions? If not, our board calendar, we are meeting next week on June seventeenth and we'll do that at six-thirty. And then, in July, we'll switch to that five-thirty time. And we will meet at five-thirty on July fifteenth and at five-thirty on August twelfth. Those are our regularly scheduled board meetings. Before Don and I came down tonight, we were talking about Don's first year as superintendent. And so, we're going to do a, a review of his performance. And so, we will be scheduling some closed sessions to do that. Obviously, we're talking about personnel and performance, but that's probably going to happen in July, I believe.
What I would like to do is maybe have a very short closed session next Monday with the idea that we'd distribute to you the, the evaluation form that we have in place. And then, discuss about the process where you would do the evaluation, get it back to Joel in a timely fashion. And then, in July, we can go over that evaluation and then we can go from there.
Great. So, look, be on the lookout for a couple of closed sessions. And I don't know if anyone has a preference of before or after. We didn't discuss that. Do you want to do that before or after?
Totally up to you. And so, at least for the first one next week, I don't know if it will take very long because we're not going to talk about the, the evaluation itself. It's just the process of filling the forms out, going through, get them to Joel so that he can tabulate the results. And then, in July, we might want to do that at the end. If we're going to start at five-thirty, that might be easier to do that at the end of the meeting rather than at the beginning.
Great. So, look for a closed session on June, June seventeenth, which is next week, probably five forty-five?
Well, I don't think you even need that much time.
Six, six o'clock?
I think it's fine, six o'clock.
Six o'clock. And Dev, if you could send a reminder out to everybody for that. If it takes fifteen or twenty minutes, that'll still give us some time. So, any questions on the calendar? If not, I will, go ahead.
I move to adjourn.
Second. Any questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? And we're adjourned.